If I can have your attention, please, if you will and enable, if you would, please stand. I will produce, uh, present to you Pastor John Dewberry, Community Bible Fellowship Church in Hampton for the invocation, pastor. And if you would, remain standing for the pledge to the flag. Pastor.
Let's pray. Father, we do thank you so much for this day. We thank you for your faithfulness. Father, we do indeed seek you as we go about doing the governmental business. We seek you because according to your word in Romans 13, you said that you placed each of these men in these positions for your divine purpose. And Father, we pray and ask that you protect them, but we also pray and ask that you give them the wisdom to make the good sound decisions as it relates to this future of this county. And Father, we do indeed lift up this county, asking that you continue to protect it, but also give this county the, the value and give it the financial structures that it needs so that it may stay successful, so that we can go about doing your divine business as your people. And Father, we thank you so much for this thing that you've given us, this thing that you've given us that is called life. We thank you so much for it, so that we may be able to go out and be good stewards of it. And we're asking in the name of your son, Jesus Christ's name, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Our president wishes to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I'm calling the Henry County Order Commission to meet 9:00 AM Tuesday, June 7, 2016, to I would like to entertain an amendment to the budget that was published. I would like to remove, uh, item 11, which is X1, and that would be Parks and Recs, Resolution to Approve the Use of Fireworks for 4th of July. We're gonna remove, I won't suggest you move that. And we're gonna add a budget amendment resolution, and I'm gonna put that in, uh, 13X123B for consideration. Anybody else have any amendments now they'd like to place on here for discussion? Not hearing any. Does somebody move? We amend the budget as amended. Now, motion District 3?
Second.
Second District 1? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, so move. Now, we'd recognize the Henry County Convention and Visitors Bureau Annual Report. The Chamber of Commerce, good morning.
Good morning, and thank you for having me. I am Laura Lucre, and I'm the Director of Tourism for Henry County, and I recognize, and I know I've spoken with all of you before, um, so just thank you for letting me come again and kind of just tell you a little bit about what we did last year. Um, I do have, I've put white folders on, um, in front of you there, and that has a copy of all, um, all information about kind of our program of work for 2015, and a lot more detail than I'm gonna cover here, but that gives you some examples of things that we've done, uh, as well as, there's a copy of our full bed tax report in there, um, so that kind of itemizes everything that was spent on behalf of Henry County, um, to promote tourism last year. And there's also a copy of some of the different advertising that we've done, so you have, have an example of that. Overall, the state of tourism, uh, in 2015 was incredibly strong. Uh, the most recent numbers that we have from this state are 2014 numbers, and they show that in that year, in 2014, $240 million was spent by tourists. Um, and we know that based on revenue that we've received for 2015, I think when we get the 15 numbers later this year, they're gonna be even stronger than that. So, it was a great year for tourism, um, in Henry County last year. And just cover a couple of the quick things that we did that were new last year. First is that, in addition to the website that we do maintain, we're finding that people are really looking to get content in a very different way. They don't necessarily just look through a list of attractions or activities, they wanna kind of read a narrative. They want to, for you to tell them a story. So, we've been really working on developing blogs, like, you know, Top 10 Things to See, or, you know, Perfect Patios in Henry County, things like that, that really tell visitors a different, in a different way, what we offer them. Um, we found that to be very successful. It's always been one of our top 10 landing pages, um, every time. We also, last time when I spoke to you, we were in the process of developing the Henry County Treasure App. And that app was a, kind of a fun way for people to explore the different, maybe lesser-known attractions in Henry County, check in, and they could win prizes for doing so. Well, that app and the associated marketing that we did along with that was actually recognized by the Southeast Tourism Society, and we won our Shining Example Award for the Best Marketing Program for 2015 with that app and its marketing. Uh, and that gave us just a regional platform to really talk about Henry County and about the attractions and the activities that we had, and it gave us some really great publicity. In addition to what we do on a gr, a scale for the entire county, we set aside a specific portion of our budget for each of the cities and/or the county to use to promote specific activities or events or, um, locations that they would like to promote. And last year, um, for Henry County, we were able to take it, take advantage of a grant that the State Tourism Office has. It was a 50-50 matching grant. We put in 50% of the funds, and they put in the other 50%, and were able to do, um, television and radio advertising on Georgia Public Broadcasting for the Veterans Museum. We had 160 television spots and 150 radio spots, each 15 seconds each. They were specifically targeting, um, the Veterans Day services at the Wall of Honor and the Veterans Museum. And in talking to Jim at the museum, I know that over 100 people came through that specifically said that they had seen those spots, or had heard those spots on the radio. Um, so, we don't know how many more just didn't mention it, but we, he had a specific, specifically at least 100 came through and said that they saw it. Um, and, uh, we also, because we have so many attractions in Henry County that are like the Veterans Museum, that are incredibly worthy, uh, but maybe don't have the resources or the funds in order to, to really promote themselves, we set up a grant program about a year ago, um, in June of last year, that let, um, partners apply for up to $5,000 a quarter to, um, to promote their, their business attraction or event. It has to be a tourism business or for a tourism event, um, and they could apply for those grants and those, to use those funds for marketing that's outside Henry County or for, um, such marketing activities as like developing a new website, something that's gonna really raise their profile and raise their visitorship. Um, and so, we've seen, uh, a lot of participation in that. We've awarded over $23,000 in grants so far to organizations like Southern Bell or Noah's Ark, um, and a lot of others that really just, very worthy activities and attractions that, um, I think that the community and the wider Atlanta, um, and Georgia world maybe is not as aware of. And the last thing that I wanna talk about is, um, Henry County suffers from, I think, a lack of awareness in, in many cases, um, and one of the things that we really wanted to do was to bring some trusted writers, people who, um, who travelers look to for advice as to where to go. So, we hosted a fam tour, or a press tour, for six different travel writers and media reps, and brought them to Henry County for three days, and they spent, um, those days visiting and eating and experiencing Henry County. We know from that trip, we've had at least six, six to eight blogs that have been directly tied to those. Two of those bloggers actually write for Explore Georgia, which is the state's blog, and that blog gets 220,000 visitors a month. Um, and so, I know we've seen a lot of traffic from, to our site from those blogs, and we only have like a tiny link at the bottom, not even our, our, our partners that are linked all the way through. So, I know that that's been very successful for them, as well as the live tweeting, the live, um, posting, the sharing that they did while they were in market. So, there's more than probably 30 or 40 different posts that have resulted while they were in market from that fam, as well as the, the blogs that have been following up. So, it's just a great way, um, to expose their readers, but also those bloggers themselves, 'cause they all told me that they were very, very unfamiliar with what Henry County offered, and they would've been just blown away. So, it's always very gratifying when you, uh, are able to show people something and surprise them. Um, so, that kind of wraps up some of the big things that we did last year. As I said, your packet includes a lot more detail about a lot more things, 'cause that's just a sampling of what we did last year. But at this time, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anybody have any questions or comments?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns and opinions that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. Anyone wishing to speak must first sign in with the county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting, completing the public comment speaker form. Speakers will be given five minutes to address the board. Each person who addresses the board shall not make any personal, impertinent, slanderous, or profane remarks to any member of this board, staff, or general public, or any person who makes such remarks, or uses loud, threatening, personal, or abusive language, or engages in any disorderly conduct which erupts, uh, disrupts or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of any board meeting, shall at discretion of the chairman or the majority of the board be barred from further audience before the board during the meeting. Having said that, I'm gonna take this in the order that they was, um, requested. Number one is, uh, Ms. Kimberly Del Rosso. I may have that correct?
Del Rosso.
Yes, ma'am. Is that close?
Yes.
I got the first name right, didn't I? Thank you. You got five minutes.
Good morning, Chairman Smith and, and Board members. Thank you for allowing me to speak this morning. I was unaware that there was a meeting. But I am with the Concerned Citizens Against Development on Racetrack Road, and I'm here to talk about the Shining Light Ministry again. We're still having some issues. Mr. Bonner contacted me, um, was supposed to contact me again to find out what could be done. There's a group of about 30 of us that are very concerned about the issues still happening at Shining Light Ministries, and I know later on that you guys will get the chance to vote. But it is a life-changing thing for me and my family. And, um, I'll speak every chance I get, but when you change the life of one family, you're changing the life of other families too, and it's not right. School is out. I have a 12, actually just turned 13-year-old Saturday child that is stuck in the house because she's afraid to go outside because one of the ladies trespass jumped over a huge fence and had a mental breakdown in my front yard. My child won't come out of the house. We've gone through therapy. It's not any better. There are commercials running on Shining Light Ministries' website right now about this new expansion that's fixing to happen, but guess what? There's nothing in planning or zoning. There's no permits. So, how can we advertise something that's not been approved yet? I don't understand. But as I watch my child every day for the last two weeks, and I just got to go to Dante's office this morning because I had to wait till school let out, I have to watch my child sit in the house and do nothing. See, my child had a bone cancer. She was left with concrete in her right leg because she caught a staph infection in Greenville, South Carolina. We were in Greenville nine months. My child will never be a normal child. She can't participate in PE. She can't go to ballet anymore. She can't go to softball anymore. The only place my child feels free is our home, which we live on almost five acres, and she should have that chance to go out in the yard and play. Do you know the only way my little girl will step outside? If mom or dad have their pistol on them. That's not right. That's not how I live. I moved to Henry County in 1991 from Clayton County. I moved here from college. I love Henry County. It is my home. But when you're putting this up against my home and you're trying to build it, and you give a lady so many variances that she can't comply with and is not complying with, and you can run a business without a license, what are we doing as a community? Are we telling every Tom, Mike, and Harry that they can set up a business and run without a license? To make a mental health clinic that's right behind my house and right beside my neighbors and backs up to my neighbors? What are we telling our community? Yeah, we're gonna put up with this? No, we're not. We need to stand up, and gentlemen, I respect each and every one of you, but you need to stand up for me? You need to stand up for the 30 people on my committee? You need to stand up for our children. The people that live next door to them have a not even three-year-old granddaughter. The people's property that backs up behind mine two years at a point have three small grandchildren. The other house that backs up to this property, guess what? They have four children that are under the age of seven. They don't deserve it, and I don't deserve it. I'm tired of walking out on my property having to carry a firearm. It's not right. I don't live in Atlanta, therefore I shouldn't have to. But to get my child to even get off the step, to get in the car, to go to school, I have to carry a pistol. Is that right? No, sir, it's not. Now, like I said, I respect you guys. You give so many variances, we can't get any information. Mr. Bonner contacted me one time, told me he would contact me again to let me know that what we could do. Mr. Bonner, I've not heard back from you. Mr. Boss, this is in your district, and I have tried to reach you two times with no avail. I'm not here to call names, but I'm here for help. I built in this county. I live in this county, and I'm not going anywhere. And I'll go as high as it takes and as far as it takes to make my point. Stand up for my children, my child, and everybody else's. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Steve Richardson.
Good morning. Steve Richardson, 207 Wind Drive, Hampton. Last time we met, we were talking about the budget and, and taking care of our, our public service, uh, uh, our people, our firefighters, our EMS, our, our policemen, everybody, everybody's supposed to get a raise. I know there's some issues there that's gonna get worked out, but I got a problem with this fire chief deal. When a man sits here and puts 28 years in this county, and I haven't seen his employment records, this just happened, so I, I haven't done any ORRs, which, uh, Ms. Stephanie, if you'll, if you will, accept this as my official request for the, all the, uh, personnel action that Mr. Bonner has done since he's been here, I'd like to see all those records. I don't understand why we have a committee of seven people, of highly, highly talented people in this county, that sit here and have these, um, first of all, I don't even know why we had a committee. Man's been here 28 years and served like he served. Should've just been put as chief, and that enough said and done. Maybe there's rules or something I don't know about, that's fine, I, I'm okay with that. But the bottom line is, and the people that I've heard and talked to that have very, uh, are very knowledgeable of the situation, the, the man was ranked right up there, and I understand county manager, you just come in and said you had the authority, and you just did what you wanted, you hired the fire chief out of Riverdale who's retired from Atlanta Fire Department. Like the lady before us, we're not, we're not in Atlanta, guys, and what are we telling our people that are sitting here busting their butts for 10, 20, 30 years? Hey, you bust your butt, and we're gonna, you, you're no good to us. The man's earned a position, he needs to be given a position. Just like these people that've earned their raises, they need to get their raises. And just because they got a little bit of a raise six months ago, whatever, doesn't mean they don't deserve the 4% raise that's coming to them now. You know, we, we need to do these people right, or we're gonna be Atlanta, we're gonna be Clayton County. They've earned it, they, they're out there putting their lives on the line, and we're sitting here telling them they're not good enough. And we not, we, where we may not be saying that verbally, we're telling them that when we're sitting here passing them over for positions that they've earned. So, I, I'd like somebody, maybe one of the six of you, could explain to me in the rest of the community why a man with 28 years of good service to this county is not good enough to be the fire chief. I got two minutes and 35 seconds. Maybe somebody can, can man up and tell us why, tell me and the rest of the community why Brad Johnson doesn't deserve to be the fire chief of this county? Why, why the secretaries and the people of the police department can't be properly, uh, titled and, and properly paid for the title for the work they do? How would this community feel if everybody over there got the blue flu at the fire department, they decided not to show up one day in retaliation? Or they decided not to work here because they've got no future here, because if they put in for the good effort for 28 years, you get nothing, nothing in return? How would that, how, how does that work? Fair and equitable, Mr. Chairman, that's what you ran on. Can, can you tell us where that's fair and equitable? Minute forty-five, we can stare down if you like. I'd just like somebody to tell this community why a man of 28 years of good service is not good enough? Why we continue to gotta jab at the, of the public safety at these guys who put their lives on the line to save everybody else's? Why we gotta call and have outside independent investigations about stuff, and the fire department, the police department, everything else, to try to make jabs at the, at Chief Lacy and Chief Nichols, and everybody involved? Why can't we do right? Why can't we support these guys and give them what they need to fight the crime, to fight the fires, to take care of us? Why can't we take care of this lady and all the children around there if, if they got issues over there? Why can't we pick up the phone, Mr. Bonner, and call somebody back? Are, are we just two and ept? I, I mean, or, or is there, is there some underlying program? What are we doing? Why can't y'all answer a simple question? It's sad, it's sad, Mr. Smith. You ran on fair and equitable, and nothing you've done in the last three and a half years has either been fair or equitable. Eighteen department heads are gone under your regime. I'll be back. Ms. Stephanie, if you'll get that for me, I appreciate it, and I'll be back.
I only have one comment. Mr. Bill Tony.
Bill Tony McDonald, Georgia. Thank you very much for the little, uh, let me be here. Okay. We're talking about cotton fields. They're advertising this right here. Hundred ninety-nine dollars, unlimited membership. You get, I'll play all four courses. Not a problem. All right. Where does that money go? The management over at, uh, these other courses, from what I gather, they're the ones that get the money, and then they give us what they want us to have. They kept the money before until, I think I was one of the ones that brought it up, that I'd seen it on the internet. And then we got a credit for $34,000. I didn't even get a thank you for that one. What I got to thinking about was a little something else. If they can take county property and do their own deal, I thought about, uh, senior citizens. I'd start my own little membership club, the Senior Folks Club, and I'll sell, as long as it's county property, I'm, I'm fine. I'll sell for $199 a month. I'll give them unlimited, uh, membership. They can go anytime they want to, to a senior citizen. Got another one. Rec, Parks and Recreation. I thought I'd go ahead and start a club over there, and we could have a park for kids, and they'd have $199, $199 a month, unlimited membership. They can go anytime, no green fees, no red fees, no cleanup fees, nothing else. So, I figured we got some empty offices around the county. I'd go ahead and have an office club. I'll even, we don't use this room that much. I'll just go ahead and rent out this room, you know, a couple of hundred bucks extra. This right here, this is all beyond crazy. You know, this is not real. I can't do it, and they shouldn't do it. Now, when you have, when you have, uh, people over at, um, Eagles Brook and all these other courses, they're collecting money off of our golf course, and it's unlimited, unlimited use of the golf course, is that fair? Mr. Barham, you play this course, from what I understand, you've told me you did, Cotton Fields. Have, have you ever seen one of these?
Oh, I haven't. I hadn't played Cotton Fields in two or three years.
Okay. What about, uh, Eagles Brook? Just curious.
I have played Eagles Brook.
Okay. Did you see this?
No.
Okay, it's on their cars. It's in their thing up in the top.
I actually played in a tournament down there, so.
Okay, but why, why do, we need to go ahead and shut that course down. They're, I don't understand how they're collecting money in their golf courses for Cotton Fields. I mean, it don't make sense. Mr. Smith, I've heard you ask for a forensic audit. I've asked you for a forensic audit. Is there anybody in this room, Mr. Smith, is there anybody in this room that can approve or do, what do I have to do to get a forensic audit at Cotton Field, sir? Or will you not answer me?
I'm gonna ask you, but I'm gonna comment at the end.
Okay.
Your time is up. To answer your question, it would take the majority of this board to authorize any kind of audit for any purpose, whether it be Cotton Field, whether it be, uh, uh, outside of the yearly audit. It would take the majority of the board here to do that. That answers your question. Mercedes Baker, I understand she had to leave because of something. Ms., Ms. Barker, are you here? Okay. She had to leave for a child-related, I understand, but she said she thought if it wasn't significant, she would make it back. Okay, next, we're gonna recognize, uh, Mr. Carl Swinson. Fifteen minutes to address the board.
Gentlemen, good to see you again. I'm here today to talk about your fiduciary responsibilities, and I'm gonna put one up here that, uh, is just an ex, just an example of one of the many corporate enterprises that are going on in the county. Now, not too many people are interested in this, but you've hea, heard me come up before and state that I didn't know what you guys were doing, what seats you were taking. And that one of the reasons for that is that- And one of the reasons for that is that, as members of the various corporations in this county, you are putting resolutions and all kinds of business before the commissioners here, but it has something to do with the corporations at the same time. And most of you understand that, well, I take that back, only one person on the Board of Commissioners understands that he is a fiduciary for one of these corporations, or for any of them. But even he was not forthcoming in that, and I'm talking in relation to the financial reports that, if you're going for office, you have to submit. Took two counties, Clayton and Henry, and I looked at those reports, and you know, it's kinda interesting that with all of the board member activity of the various corporations by the commissioners for the two counties, only one person recognized on his form, disclosure form, that he had these responsibilities. That was Preston. Good job. But you forgot one. You forgot the Henry County Governmental Finance Corporation. You might wanna take a look and add that in the next one. Nah, nah, I take that back, you, that was 2015, I think you put that in there, I'm not sure. But you got all the others, but nobody else did. Nobody. As Board of Directors for these corporations, you are the fiduciaries, and as such, when you fill out a financial disclosure form, even though you don't get any benefit, you still have to do that. And if you look at this stuff, these things are set up in a fashion that should aggravate the people out there because they vote for people to come up here and represent them. And many times, people go into office with all the right intentions, that they're gonna do for the people what they said they're gonna do, and they may try, they may try. But from the moment they sign their oath of office, they're not just, in this case, commissioners, by golly, they're on the Board of Directors. And you know how many actually know that whenever they take that office? It's been my experience, none of them. But it still comes up. It comes up in the meetings, because money flows, you see, money flows between these corporations, sometimes big money, like money that came out of Office Industrial Park Corporation. Hmm, big money. Cotton Fields, as a matter of fact, you know, they're intimately involved in that. And, see, that's part of your job that you didn't know anything about, that people didn't know anything about. We, the people that are looking at this, wanna bring this to your attention so that you can change that, so that you won't encumber the next group of politicians, servants, hopefully they're gonna be public servants, so that you won't encumber them and tie their hands so that they can't do what it is they said they wanted to do, whatever that might And speaking of cottonwoods, we had a couple of things that nobody really talked about, but let's talk about them for just a second. You've got right next door to them, Emergency Management, and there's a building right in back of Emergency Management that was a part of Cotton Fields. Now, if I understand correctly, that building, being on Cotton Fields property, is being used by Emergency Management. Just like we were surprised to find out that there was a church that was operating over there. Generally, I mean, I had a business in Stockbridge, and I got calls all the time from churches, they wanted to rent space from me. So apparently, this church wanted to rent space from the Schweningers. But it all gets muddied, really, really muddied, because you have to give the okay. Now, you're giving it the okay from what position? Let's see. Oh, yeah, that would've been from the Office Industrial Park Corporation. But, gentlemen, you know, I'm having a hard time finding minutes to those meetings, just like I can't find any for this. And why this one is important is because there's something in the background that you're not paying attention to. Somebody's controlling these. Oh, yeah, they are. That would be your wonderful friends, the Esquires, and they're advising you on what to do. Oh, yeah, because you have to look to them. You're running a major corporation here, for goodness sakes, billion dollars a year, give or take, okay? Heck, most of us have problems balancing the checkbook, and it's hard to expect you guys to come up here and look at all the intricacies. So you delegate the authority, you delegate responsibilities, or in some cases, they've already been delegated, and you just accept it for what it is. But we hired you to build the county. That's not what's happening. It's not what's happening at all. We're working for other people, you guys are working for other people. You're working for the Development Authority, you're working for the state, you're working for, oh, the courts, and we'll get to that real quick, like, because you have bylaws. This corporation has its bylaws, and those bylaws are the articles of incorporation, and each one of these corporations has one. How many of you are the articles of incorporation for environmental services? Anybody? Nah, probably not. I have. Curiously, they're all the same. They take each and every one of you, unbeknownst to you, and get you right into the corporate realm so that when you set up here and you start having resolutions, dealing with money, we don't know who you're dealing with, or for. Is it for the Governmental Finance Corporation? Is it for the Office Industrial Park Corporation? Is it Henry First, or any of the other numbers of corporations? We don't know. But you know who does know? The attorneys. That's right. And you've got one here that's right in the middle of it. Now, I'm gonna have to ask you this, because this is important. I have not been able to find any act on the part of this Board of Directors in relation to Henry First that put Patrick Jockstetter in a position of attorney in fact. I can't find anything, and yet, the annual registration was filed on April first, and those of you who were made aware of this said, huh, we don't want anything to do with that, so you vacated your positions. Good job, guys, good job. But that just kinda left us out there. You did half the job. That corporation is not needed for anything that you can't do, sitting there as commissioners. But it's still there, and you know something? When we have a turnover, we're gonna have a new Board of Directors. So come January, when new people are sworn in, guess what? New Board of Directors. But in the meantime, in the meantime, since April first, we had, it was forty-two thousand in this account. Historically, five, six, seven, eight thousand dollars a year may come in and out of there, but for some reason, this past year, we had forty-two in there. Hmm. And after you guys had vacated, checks were being written on this, and there was a little change-up in the structure there. We just still don't have a commission president, I mean, a Board of Directors with a president, vice president, and secretary, but we can still write checks. How's that working for you? Because nobody's accountable, and only one person answers to that now, and that is Patrick Jockstetter. Now, having said that, these things reek of impropriety. But where's a guy to go? I can come up here, and I can talk to you about it, and I do. But if I find something that looks on the other side illegal, where do we go? Go to the DA? Can't do that. I've proven that over in Clayton. They'll run interference for you. Oh, gosh. And they'll run interference for anybody involved in this. But there is one place for us to go. People, please remember this, and try, you know, you'll probably have as much success as I do, but we have something called a sitting grand jury that is not the playground for the courts, but they're using it as such. And we have every right to take our allegations and our criminal complaints directly to them. But that DA, he's not gonna let that happen. And you know something? By virtue of them doing what they're doing and not living up to their fiduciary responsibilities, they are breaking federal law by not allowing the people access to that grand jury with criminal charges. Now, I've talked to you about this, Tommy, and I don't know what you can do, I really don't. But I wish, as commissioners, you'd help the people to get some justice in this county. That is your responsibility, to protect our rights, not the rights that are given out through these corporations, through their bylaws, not the rights that are given through the various entities we call the state and local, no, 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 no. They don't give us any rights. God alone gives us those rights, life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness. We don't have to write those things down, it's common sense, and you guys have gotta start using common sense at some point, and you can change things around for the better by moving away from this corporate structure that you've been living under all this time, and the control that is being exerted by these attorneys, these Esquires, who, by the way, shouldn't be there via Article One, Section Nine, Clause Eight, and Article One, Section Ten, Clause One, you know, they're still holding those doggone titles, that's an inconvenient thing, but they shouldn't be there. But you gotta do something, you gotta say something. You wanna stop this mess, you wanna be the public servant you're supposed to be, then do it. Start cleaning this mess up, because every county has corruption, you know they do. Money flows. We don't know where it's all flowing, but we know it flows. But the people who make it possible are the Patrick Jocksteters out there. Sorry, not trying to cause any problems, but I want the people to be aware, and I want you to be aware, that there is more to this than just sitting up there and accepting resolutions, yea or nay. There's a lot more, and it affects so many people in so many different ways, but you're not being the public servants when you go for this. You're not. When I bring you a silly little issue about the Fourteenth Amendment not being valid, as recognized by the nineteen fifty-seven Georgia Congress, both houses and the governor, hmm, and ten other states too, by the way, is it above your pay grade? Is it? Because laws are being broken all the day, all the time, and we don't have a place to go. Didn't, but we do. And the people who are bringing this to light need your help. How am I gonna get past the DA? How am I gonna get him to get a criminal allegation to the grand jury? Oh, they can do with it what they will, they can say, yeah, no, I agree or disagree, but we've gotta have that access. You guys can help. That is your fiduciary responsibility, to help your constituents. So when I come up here and I start talking about these corporations, I know your eyes get all glazed over, and they roll back in your head, and, oh, goodness gracious, here comes Swinson again. Got it. But we bring important stuff, whether the people behind me understand, or even you. There's legal ramifications for what you do. If you're operating outside of your charter.
Time is up.
Gentlemen, have a great day.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments after he sits down? The only comment I would make is, when I first was elected here, the, I was given a email, I just sent it to me the other day to refresh my memory, from the county attorney at the time indicating that we were members of three organizations. It didn't really dongle me, and I know when Mr. Swinson brought this to the board's attention, I knew I wasn't a part of any kind of corporation or authority. Well, since then, I found out that obviously, this board has to have elections and appoint the membership to these corporations and incorporations and the authority. I think the authority is the only one that makes the board up here automatically members of the authority. But the board, this board, I can tell you, five of us didn't know this, and if you'd asked me before they mentioned Commissioner Preston, I would've told you, six of us didn't know this. But having said that, if you check the Secretary of the States, my name is not on there, because in order to be listed as a CEO of a corporation, the board has to elect a membership first, then within the membership, they have to elect officers, a secretary, a CEO, and a CFO, and also an agent of record. Well, for thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, I found out that I was a agent of record, which I didn't have knowledge of, I was a CEO of these corporations, which I didn't realize I was, and then the secretary, which was the clerk, I quizzed her, she didn't know she was on there, so, and then the CFO, he knew he was there because his office is the one that filed this. But anyway, having said this, it's my opinion that these incorporations were set up and designed by extremely trained legal minds to allow a governmental agency, like elected officials, to do things that they can't do as elected officials. Like, for an example, the corporations, the Henry County Industrial Park, La Di Da Corporation, for an example, it would be members, it could be members of this board. Now, the bylaws doesn't say it has to be the members up here, the board could put five members, put five citizens on this corporation, but that corporation shares the same legal ramification that a private corporation would have. That means this board handling county business could meet in secret, the records would not be, to my knowledge, would not be available through open records. But after saying all that, my name is off of all this. Okay, the board needs to have official resolutions, they need to put people on these boards, and then within the board, they need to do that. But here's my thought. I'm elected official, and anything or any item that's related to county business, your business, if I can't do it as an elected official, I have no business doing it. I don't need to go under another clause to do something I'm not capable of. Everything that I need to be doing here, I need to be doing it face value and doing it myself, and I feel the same way about the boards. But having said that, I yield the floor to anybody that'd like to make a comment. Receiving no comments, what I'd like to do, with no objections, I noticed that Ms. Barker reappeared, so with no objections, I would like to extend her five minutes for comments. No objections, Ms. Barker, you have five minutes. State your name at the podium, please, and I hope everything worked out in your absence.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Henry County Board of Commissioners and Board Chairman. My name is Mercedes Barker, I live at two seven five Hillview Road, Hampton, three zero two two eight. I've been a citizen of Henry County since nineteen ninety-eight. My records are out there, you can look it up, my property tax information, and you can see the amounts we've paid, we own our property since nineteen ninety-one, when my husband and I moved here. I was a controller up at the Air Traffic Control Center until ninety-nine, and then now I'm a stay-at-home mother by choice. I have four children, we're home educators, but I'm here not to talk about any of that. I'm here to talk about taxes. I was here about two years ago to speak about it in the past, and it's not about not paying my taxes. In fact, in the Bible, it says, render unto Caesar what is Caesar's. I'm all about paying what's the fair amount. I'm gonna try to be quick about this and make sure I get all my information together correctly. Yesterday, I came to file my letter of appeal. My basic issue is, my... My basic issue is my, my, my house value this year increased by, the percentage is here, 25%. My land value increased by 48%, and my, so my total value of my entire, of our entire property is 27% increase. My property taxes themselves, what they're estimating them to be is a 29% increase. That is unreasonable for the county to say, when on one sheet here that I got up here from the Tax Assessor's Office yesterday, that the average increase per residential homes was 11%, and actually, the May 2016 year-on-year inflationary rate of Georgia was 2.1%. You tell me on a single income of under $35,000 where I'm going to come up with a 29% increase in my property taxes. Actually, I set aside $2,000 from last year because it was 1,800 last year. I said, I'm going to bump it up a little bit, ten, a little bit. Well, it was another $400 I don't have, and it's still not settled out yet because I did file my letter of appeal. But this is not about my not paying my property taxes. I want to, I want to propose, I don't know if I'm barking up the wrong tree or not, but all of you, I'd like to ask each of you a question, if you don't mind answering my question. You just show it by a raise of hands if you'd like. Do you believe in the fair tax? Are you supporters of fair tax? Are you familiar with fair tax? Is anyone here familiar with fair tax? Are you guys allowed to comment? Am I saying this the wrong way? Okay. Well, the fair tax is a fair way of assessing taxes across the board, and all I'm asking is that the county start assessing taxes fairly, not on property values. There's plenty of other ways we can do it. We can do it by acreage in the county. We can do it by effective space in the county also, effective space of, within a building. And that includes your heated and your porches and everything like that. If you own a business, it has to do with everything undercover. But I believe that that would be a fairer way of doing it instead of doing it under property taxes. As of, I just did a stupid calculation, and it's not an accurate one because I realized afterward that the, my numbers were probably skewed, but just for instance, the new fiscal year budget was $183 million. I believe that's what I came to that meeting a couple weeks ago and they came up with is almost $184 million. And in the county, there is, as of right now, 200 and not, over, let's say 210,000 acres. If we assessed it just by acreage, okay, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we do it by acreage, it would be $878.70 per acre is how much each landowner would be requested to be paying. It would take it off of property value and put it on a fee schedule where we could do it off of what monies are needed. But perhaps this will give the opportunity for someone to think about a different way of coming up with the monies that the county needs to run its business. Thank you.
I'm not starting a dialogue, but the comments, if you'll notice at the back of the agenda, I'm going to announce we're going to have three meetings for public hearing for the millage rate. Now, the reason we have in three, the law requires that if the governmental body is anticipating a property tax increase, you have to have three hearings. Otherwise, if you rolled it back 100%, which would be no property tax, and you just have one meeting and adopt a millage. Now, having the three meetings doesn't mean the board's going to do anything, but the intent of it is to have three meetings required by law that in order, if you are anticipating a property tax increase, you have to have the three meetings. So we have in three meetings this year, so take it for this word. Consent Agenda. The following agenda items shall be considered on the consent agenda before voting on the consent agenda. Chairman will provide opportunity to add or delete any item. Public Safety. Resolution accepting $425 on a quarterly basis for a total of $1,700 from the United States Secret Service as part of the Henry County Police participation in the Electronic Crime Task Force. Building and Plan Review. Resolution approving request for an additional of one street light to an existing street light district in the Winter Creek Estate, Waner Creek, Winter Creek, estate subdivision located on Jones Bay Road. Juvenile Court. Resolution approving an agreement with Henry Guardian Advocate LLC for Guardian at Lightham Service. Splotch. Resolution authorizing the chairman to sign all new utility service agreements needed to have utilities connected. Resolution approving the charter commercial account right-of-way entry. Resolution to approve a revised family connection operation grant for the Connect and Henry for the Georgia Department of Human Resources DOT. Resolution requesting non-revenue streetlights on Ice Road and Rose Garden Cemetery. Resolution approving submission of an application for Federal Transit Administration 5310 Transportation Grant for Elderly and Disabled Individuals for the period of July 1, 2016 through June 3, 2017. That concludes the end of the consent agenda. Somebody like to delete that for discussion or add to it? If not, does somebody move, we accept the consent agenda is read.
So moved.
Have a motion District 5?
Second.
Second from District 4. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Transit. A resolution authorizing the purchase of two 16-passenger buses using the FTA 5307 grant. Mr. Salter. For Debbie, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Salter couldn't be here today. He asked me to stand in for him. This is a request to buy two replacement vehicles for two of our older vehicles in our fleet that have surpassed their five-year or 100,000-mile useful life. We will be using our FTA 5307 grant to purchase this, which is an 80-20% purchase.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Have a resolution of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for the purchase of two 16-passenger buses. Somebody move in that direction? Have a motion District 5? Second District 1. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. Next, we'll have a resolution considering approving the Joint Henry County City's Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Update from the plan and Mr. Jordan and Stacey Jordan. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here today representing staff, asking you to approve the final document of the Joint Henry County City's Comprehensive Transportation Plan. And I want to take this moment to thank Ms. Sherry Hopson Matthews as the project manager for allowing me to be a part of this process. It's been a long time coming, and we're glad to finally be here today. Also, I want to take the moment to appreciate Dante Gibbs for allowing me to use my staff time to go toward this endeavor. We have put this document together using Jacob's Engineering, and today we have Emily Ritzler to present to you and also Michael Cray. Wanted to let you know that we have put this document together using public involvement through the way of open houses, public events, a stakeholder committee, as well as surveys and so forth like that. In addition to planning and zoning, also, your Henry County DOT, Splotch, Transit Communications and others, as well as representatives from the cities, have added their input as well. Additionally, we have had a technical committee which involves staff from the state and others to assist Henry County, and we appreciate that. We've met with each one of you, and we appreciate your time to include your comments so that we are sure that we can include your input into this comprehensive transportation plan. As comprehensive, it involves roads. It involves transit. It involves active transportation, which we're calling walking and biking and canoeing and so forth like that. Henry County has planning as a continual process, and I wanted to make sure that you understood that this comprehensive transportation plan will set us up for the next plan, which is a transit study, which will be coming before you later on this year. So what you see today involves transit, but just to set us up for something further that's down the road. Additionally, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan is the transportation element of the greater comprehensive plan, which will be required to be adopted in the year 2018, and we'll start next year putting that comprehensive plan together. And of course, after that, it'll be time for the five-year update of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan again, which should happen in 2021. So with no further ado, I want to bring Michael and Emily up here to present your plan to
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you.
Good morning.
We're really excited to present the outcome of the Comprehensive Transportation Plan and everything we went through. I just want to say thank you very much to the county staff and their support in getting through this, especially Sherry Hopson Matthews, Stacey Jordan-Rudisol. And we had several members on our project management team that also were huge contributors to this process. That's Rocky Romero, David Simmons, Wade Stroud, Ty Salters, and Debbie Crabtree. And we had invaluable input from them throughout this process. I'm just going to quickly go through, a quick summary of the overall process, and then Michael's going to get into some of the details and key themes that came out of the plan. So the purpose of this project was to develop a prioritized list of transportation projects and give a six-year action plan for moving projects forward, as well as an unconstrained financial plan through the year 2040. And then what we also got into were some policies that went along with this and how to use those funds and leverage available funds in order to implement the overall plan. So the process for the Comprehensive Transportation Plan is fairly straightforward. This was done through partial grant from the Atlanta Regional Commission, and that started with an inventory of existing conditions, which was really to set the framework for where we are, and then doing a needs assessment to determine what could be improved, and then ultimately, the recommendations and the project prioritization of what projects can fulfill those needs. As Stacey said, we have a separate transit feasibility study that's being completed under a separate cover. That plan will be ready very shortly. We've incorporated many of the recommendations from that into that plan, but as that is finalized, it'll be further incorporated into this as well as the overall comprehensive plan.
And discuss what, you know, has been incorporated into the upcoming transit plan?
Absolutely. When Michael gets into the overall themes, we have some specific slides on the transit feasibility study as well, and we'll be happy to take questions related to that as we get through it. There it is, the transit feasibility. It followed the same process. We did existing conditions, needs assessment, and recommendations. We also went through a additional public outreach effort for this. Several of you participated in the Transit Sharet that we held with Commissioner Holmes in District 5. We got some really great feedback on that. A key element of that was a latent demand analysis where we conducted a statistically valid survey to identify people who would ride transit that may not be riding transit now. And that was a real key element to understand where that demand is and how a system would be used in the future, maybe in just a few years as well as out to 2040. Just quickly, the overall timeline, you know, we're wrapping this up now and hoping for adoption today on the overall plan. We've had a series of public outreach efforts throughout, as well as technical team meetings, stakeholder meetings, and the project management team. And then just a quick refresher of the goals of the process. We started off with the goals that were recognized in the 2007 Comprehensive Transportation Plan and did some work with input from the public as well as all of you and our stakeholders to update those goals. Some changes that happened since the last plan were the passage of new federal legislation at the transportation level, as well as a new regional plan from the Atlanta Regional Commission. And also, we have a new transportation binding legislation at the state level. So with those changes in place, we really wanted to look at, to make sure that our goals aligned with the national goals and regional goals, as well as what you want here locally. So Michael's going to get into some of those key themes, just the types of project recommendations. Again, this is a comprehensive transportation plan where we did look at all modes of transportation. So this included looking at new connection roads, roadway widenings. Good news is you have a lot of activity happening with the Georgia Department of Transportation right now and some of your state routes. What we could do to upgrade facilities that, you know, maybe some curb and gutter, that type of operational improvement to make the roads safer. Intersections, we looked at bicycle and pedestrian facilities. Transit was a major component of the overall plan, and again, that'll come as a separate document, and then policies to help move those projects forward. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Michael.
Thank you. So we wanted to give you kind of a high-level update of some of the themes that we saw develop during the planning process and in the development of this CTP. And the first theme that we want to talk about is I-75, which is the backbone of Henry County. It is, it provides access to regional jobs. It provides economic development through access to freight mobility. And so we wanted to make sure not to ignore I-75. It is a state route. It is a federal responsibility as well, but we wanted to make sure to look at I-75 because we know that there's already high congestion and delay on this road, and it serves a number of local and regional trips. So the Managed Lane Project, which is currently underway, is going to provide some congestion relief for the county. However, through our analysis, we're showing that by the year 2040, most of those gains are going to be eroded, and the I-75 is going to be congested once again. So the major recommendation that's coming out of this plan to address the congestion issues on I-75 are collector-distributor lanes. These are lanes that will facilitate interchange-to-interchange travel within Henry County and get some of the local trips off of the main route, and will open up the main line for longer-distance travel. In addition, we think that some new north-south arterial connections to provide some redundancy to I-75 will also alleviate some of the traffic problems on I-75. And that leads right into this connectivity theme. We looked at all the different arterial routes within the county and identified a reliance on I-75 due to a lack of additional north-south routes. So we have recommended a number of new roadways, as well as arterial upgrades, to improve north-south and east-west connections. In addition, we're recommending what we're calling a new street framework, and this is something that would go into the comprehensive plan and recognize where those new roads are planned to be built so that when development occurs, it doesn't preclude those roads from being built. A great example would be Airline Road connecting down around King Mill. We want to put that in a street framework so that if development occurred there, it wouldn't preclude that connection. Does anybody know what's on the, on the screen here? This is the beautiful South River, which forms the, a large portion, portion of the border of Henry County. We think there are wonderful natural resources in the county that can really be taken advantage of with transportation investment. So the third theme that we've highlighted is healthy Henry and promoting health through active transportation. Like Stacey was saying before, sidewalks, greenway trails, bike lanes, things like that can actually promote health of Henry County residents. So we've recommended a multi-use trail network, a sidewalk program, and we want to do things to take advantage of those natural resources. Again, like Stacey was saying, he talked about canoes, but, you know, a greenway trail along the South River could promote health as well as economic development. A fourth theme is Main Street, Henry County. There is currently a widening project underway on State Route 42 between McDonough and Stockbridge. We think this is a great opportunity, not only... We think this is a great opportunity, not only to widen the road, but also to create a sense of place within the county, make this a complete street and a place where development will occur, and give a sense of place to the county. And we've put some funds in the short-term action plan to help get this vision to reality. Fifth theme is transit. And so we have a transit feasibility study that we'll be finishing up here within the next few weeks. From that, we've highlighted some of the recommendations that will be presented. The one that made it into the short-term action plan was new express service to the airport. We, actually, this came from citizen involvement from the Transit Sherret that we held with District Five, and this, a new airport service to, express service to the airport would serve multiple functions. It would provide a direct connection to MARTA heavy rail, it would provide a direct connection to the airport for employment opportunities, as well as travel opportunities. We have done some outreach with Greta Express, and this is something in their Horizon Two of service changes. So it's on their horizon, and they're interested in it, and it's something that would make a great partnership between the county and Express to do that type of service. We've also looked at new local bus service. We have a pilot local bus route that we've identified that would provide connections between McDonough and Stockbridge, providing connections to the hospital as well. And I'll skip down to the long-range, high-capacity transit. We've looked at high-capacity transit. We know that the citizens have told us that this is something that they would like to see, high-capacity being rail or bus rapid transit, something like that, to help with their commute options. And we've looked at this, we've put this recommendation in there. However, it's not something that's going to be done in the short term. This is something that needs to be built upon, continue working with regional transit authorities to get this vision to reality. And that leads right into partnering with MARTA potentially, and Express to implement some of this new transit service. There are great possibilities out there, and some efficiencies to be gained from partnering with these agencies. And so going to funding, the total plan cost that we've identified for the projects we have identified is about $3 billion, $3.3 billion. We've projected revenues over the 25 years of the plan, and there's about a little over $1 billion, which leaves a $2 billion funding gap. Now, that seems like a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, but Henry County is in a great position right now. Henry County has a very active splosh. It will help out a lot, and like Emily was saying before, with new federal legislation and new state funding legislation, there are opportunities out there. And so we've identified three different funding scenarios to help to close that gap. The first scenario is a transportation bond. Forsyth County recently approved a $200 million transportation bond, and we think that Forsyth is actually a very similar county to Henry. Both suburban counties on the edge of the Atlanta region, they have one major route, I-75 and State Route 400, to focus on, and what they were able to do with that $200 million is actually invest it with the state and leverage another $100 million to bring in state money to expand Georgia 400. I think that's a great strategy that is a good potential for the county. Another potential funding scenario would be to take the existing splosh and allocate 100% of that to transportation funding. If that were to, if you were to do that, it would generate almost $500 million over the life of the plan. And finally, with HB 170, there is enabling legislation for a transportation splosh, an additional splosh that could generate almost $1.3 billion. So there are options out there that could help to close this funding gap. And finally, forging partnerships, and what this really should say is continue forging partnerships, because the county has done a great job recently of working with the state with GDOT to get funding on the State Route 81 expansion project, as well as trying to get funds for a park-and-ride lot to work in conjunction with Greta Express. We think that this is a great opportunity to partner with state agencies like GDOT to leverage local funds to bring in more state and federal funds into the county to address some of these issues. So thank you very much. With that, that concludes the presentation.
And Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just want to thank Emily and Michael for working so hard to put this together. We've got this plan that's posted, you've got the hard copies in front of you. The themes that we have gone through with the I-75, which includes freight, as well as the Healthy Henry, and the funding strategies that have been identified, as well as transit, it's a comprehensive plan, and I know that we've said that, but I just want to reiterate it, that it covers everything. And so Stephanie, if you would show the overhead, again, just giving you guys a sneak peek of the transit study that's coming, this was one of the slides that Michael had presented. Jacobs has identified a pilot route to go for bus service between McDonough and Stockbridge. They've identified two different potential routes for the high-capacity transit that Michael had mentioned, and that could be the rail service. In this case, it connects Clayton State University with Stockbridge. In one instance, it runs along I-75, in another instance, it goes along North Henry Boulevard and down 42. It's innovative to introduce the idea of a Main Street Henry along Highway 42 between North Henry Boulevard and the square of McDonough, and that's what Jacobs has done. So we're hoping that this will begin a vision for the year 2040, and we have to understand that that is our planning horizon, and so we want Henry County to take its place in amongst the other metro counties as the jewel of the Southern Crescent, which is what we used to call ourselves. So if there are any questions, we'd be pleased to answer them at this time.
I don't have any questions, anybody? I yield a four to District Four.
I have more of a statement, really, just to the constituents, and then back to you guys. I'm going to bring down the engineering a little bit and just talk frankly. To the citizens, I think it's important to understand how we got in the situation that we're in, and the transportation in the county grew kind of organically over the years as we've developed. And what's happened, we went and we would fix areas where there was congestion or a backup, but you have to look at the entire system as kind of like a water system, and if you release water from a valve here and it ends up here, it's going to back up here. So what we've done historically is we've taken areas of congestion, we've opened them up, and then put congestion in another area. And what we've done as we progress, though, through a county, we've leaned on 75 so-so much that I believe it was 80% of the traffic on 75 is local, is that correct?
It's about, it's about 40%.
40%?
Yeah, which is still very high.
Still very high, okay, I'm sorry. Anyway, what we've done is leaned on I-75 so-so heavy for local traffic, and we lack north-south corridors. So you've got some several main ones, which 42, 155, or some other north-south, and that's one of the main things that we're trying to do, is get traffic moving north-south to get traffic off of 75. Again, we've become very dependent on that. We've got quite a bit of roads running east-west, but we really have to focus on north-south and get the collector-distributor roads back where they need to be. But I do need the citizens to realize, you know, when the economy tanked, the government didn't fare well either. We, you know, we had issues, or the government did, I wasn't with the government then, but we had issues as well, and there was no money. And so we've kind of been on pause since the economy went down, and we're now getting back to where we're starting to get some things moving forward. But I do need everybody, the citizens, to realize, we all know traffic is a major issue here in Henry County. It is no secret, you know, you've got to pack a lunch to go anywhere on Saturday here in Henry County, and it's terrible. But I need also to realize that the price tag of this is $3 billion, so it's not something that we can simply vote and move the money over in a budget very simply, it's something that is a long-term, long-term and expensive process that we are aware of and we are working toward. This is just the first phase, and, you know, also, we need to realize, even if we had $3 billion today, it's going to be 10 years before we see much of this stuff really start moving. We'll have some small things start coming in, but if you started a transportation project today, it would be at least seven years before you broke ground. So we're moving that direction, we're a little behind, but we are getting that direction. This is a very important first step. I would ask that the citizens go online, this is online, yes? This whole transportation study is there. Look at it, see it, understand what we're doing. We're not sitting up here just oblivious, we all drive through this traffic every day. So please go review this plan. If you have any comments, concerns, questions, please come back, talk to the Commissioners, let us know. We'll relay this information to our representatives, and we're getting everything moving. There's a lot of different areas in this as well, some of the stuff with the hiking trails or the multi-use trails, very important in Henry County. I know some people may not see it that way, but I travel to Rockdale County probably every weekend to get on the trails, so it's important too, and I'm pleased to see 42 that that project's underway. I am a little miffed that there's a $12 million shortfall on that project that looks like local funding, so we'll have to see if we can find that, to get that going. Another, one little small thing we do need to fix, R-9, which is Rock Quarry Road widening, it says that the county's going to fund $31 million. We only in Splosh Four put enough money in there for the design plans, so we'll need to go back, circle back around to that one, because I feel Rock Quarry and 42 are going to be my two main ones that we need to really get on, and I hate to see that we're $12 million shy on 42 right now, and Rock Quarry we're going to have to come up with.
So the $12 million is more like a contingency, and how we proposed the Main Street Henry concept?
Yes.
Is more expensive than a typical widening.
I understand.
And so that was really ensuring that that could be built in that way.
In that manner.
So.
And I agree with that. I don't know, and again, I would get the citizens, ask them to go back through and take a look at that cross-section, the road cross-section. Changes the dynamic of 42, makes 42 do a actual corridor and a business-type corridor, as it should be. And, you know, we spent a lot of time, and I know Stacy's been here with rezonings many, many times, where people are trying to zone and put commercial areas out in cow pastures, and now, you know, people, everybody stands up. We had a big one with a family dollar. But this gives businesses an opportunity to go in this corridor, and really, we're moving that direction, we understand it now, but it just takes time to get there. So with that, I'm going to just say, I appreciate you guys, we're getting there, I see a lot of good things. Really, really, really looking forward to getting 42 widened and 155, really need it. But thanks for everything you're doing, and we appreciate it.
Chairman.
Yes, sir. I yield a four to District Three.
Michael, you had talked about the South River earlier, and I know that's the line from us and the Joining County, but is there any plans to do anything with that bridge? It's probably the longest bridge that we have in Henry County, and probably the narrowest.
The State Route 81 Bridge?
Yes, the South River.
There is, that would be incorporated within a widening of 81, which we have identified in the plan, so that would be associated with a widening. In terms of bridge maintenance and the current status of the bridge, it's not, it did not rise as an issue, but it would be taken care of as part of the State Route 81 widening.
Commissioners, if I may, what we have to look at with these road improvements, especially on state routes, is we have to meet the requirements for what's called logical termini, and the county line itself wouldn't be considered a logical terminus, so more than likely, that bridge improvement would be taken care of with a widening that would extend all the way to 212 in Newton County.
The only comment I'd make, based on South River, when you showed that picture, I would have identified that as probably a river in North Georgia. If you'd have put one up there, the South River in the 80s, the 60s, 70s, 80s, we call it Soapstone Creek. If you recall, that was probably one of the most polluted bodies of water going through Henry County down to Jackson Lake, and that's why, back then, the catfish at Jackson Lake was about 200 pounds.
Having said that, I yield a four, anybody like to make a comment? If not, we have a resolution before you approving a joint Henry County Cities Comprehensive Transportation Plan. Somebody move in that direction?
Move to the front.
You have a motion, District Four. Second District One, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you. Resolution approving a bid award to the relocation of Mount Pleasant Road, a part of Phase Two of the Runway 24 Extension Project at the Atlanta, correction, the Henry County Airport. How much can I comment here? Why aren't we still calling that the Atlanta South Regional? This board officially changed the name of that in 2013, and they're still calling it that.
Mr. Chairman, this board, the record's pretty clear that the board acted on it, and it is currently titled the Henry County Airport. There is a requirement for FFA to go back and do a flyover and designate the letters on it that hasn't been completed yet, or any other changes, but right now, as everything that says in the boards' will and the resolutions, it is the Henry County Airport.
Okay, so we're going to follow through with that, right?
The three letters is A, Alpha, I'm sorry, I might need some help with the three letters.
Four, Alpha, Seven.
I thought a flight controller might know that.
Yes, he did, Four, Alpha, Seven.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it would still be Four, Alpha, Seven, whether it's called Henry County Hampton or whatever it is, it's still Be Four, Alpha, Seven. But normally, it takes, once the FAA gets word of this, in order to change all the approach plates and all that, it only takes 18 months.
Well, now, there, with the expansion, and if I'm reading it right, through the thread, with the expansions that are currently on the agenda with this one, they will have to come over and complete another flyover, and I believe it's scheduled to come up in September, was that right? That's correct.
So you're telling me eventually will be changed to Henry County Airport?
That is the move that they're going to make, but right now, with what I'm about to present, the understanding is, is that they weren't planning on doing that. They were planning on doing one, as Lyndon mentioned, that it was going to require a flight check to do the name change with this project that I'm presenting before you guys today.
You're telling me they have to, I'm just asking, they have to do a flight check for a name change?
Yes.
I don't get it. But anyway, okay, as it is, I'll yield a four to you.
All right. Good morning, Chairman and fellow board members. What I'm presenting before you this morning is a resolution to approve the bid award for the relocation of Mount Pleasant Road, which is a part of Phase Two of the Runway 24 Extension Project at the Atlanta South Regional Airport, as it's still called. On December 4th of 2012, the board approved a resolution 12-256, which authorized the acceptance of a contract with the Georgia Department of Transportation and the certification of funding for Phase One of the Runway 24 Extension Project, and that's shown on the exhibit table. The contract for Phase One contained a condition that clarified that that contract was Phase One of a two-phase project, and that once funding was available, Henry County was to proceed with the completion of Phase Two, which was the land acquisition for road relocation and runway protection zone, relocation of Mount Pleasant Road, and the design displacement removal. So that project, more described in detail, is Mount Pleasant Road relocation, including including the right-of-way acquisition for that road relocation, the runway protection zone, land acquisition, the design of the removal of the displaced threshold, which is out there right now due to Mount Pleasant Road's current location, runway safety area improvements, including the demolition of that old section of Mount Pleasant Road, and then, of course, engineering services associated with that. The Georgia Department of Transportation in July of 2015, allocated funding for Phase 2 in their tentative allocation letter that required a 5% local match from Henry County to secure 90% federal funding and 5% state assistance. And Henry County, at the end of the same month, July 30th of 2015, committed to proceed with and fund Phase 2, which was estimated at a total cost of Phase 2 of $5,734,043. And it was funded as follows. Five million, which was shown on the earlier exhibit, 5,160,639 dollars was the 90% federal match. And then 286,702 is the state match, and then the same would be the local match, 286,702 dollars, which would be our local match. We contracted with Croy Engineering, which is an authorized airport engineering firm, to initiate the work to complete Phase 2. They completed the design and obtained approval from the Georgia Department of Transportation, and we therefore submitted, sealed bids were solicited for the relocation of Mount Pleasant Road. Five bids were received for that project. And the lowest and most responsive bid was received from ER Snell Contractor Incorporated of Snellville, Georgia, at an overall cost of $1,568,599.43. And the board, or the project was bid contingent upon acquisition of the property necessary to build the relocated section of Mount Pleasant Road and also contingent upon the execution and delivery of a contract or agreement by and between Henry County and the Georgia Department of Transportation for state and federal funding assistance for the costs of Phase 2. So I would like to say that I would request award of the bid to ER Snell. And I'll put up a bid tab as well to show you the breakdown of the bids. Like I said, there were five companies that bid on it and it's not shown in an order there. The award is in the middle, but you can at least see the range of numbers. And I'll go on to say that the consultant, they did an estimate for that project and the bid, the lowest bid you can see there is 1,000, 1.56, roughly 1.57. The consultant estimated the project over a year ago now at about 1.53. So I'd say that's a pretty close estimate to what the bid actually came in at. So again, I would like to ask for approval to award the bid, bid award to ER Snell with the contingencies that I mentioned, the contingent upon acquisition of the property to construct the project as well as the execution and delivery of a contract by GDOT for funding for Phase 2, which we hope is forthcoming.
Matthew's Contracting Company, is that the company that's doing the express lanes?
That's, yeah, I believe so. Yes, sir, is that, that's correct, yes.
I went through that yesterday and it's hard to believe that in the event that they got this award, it'd have any tractors or trucks left to go someplace else. I've never seen so many trucks and tractors in my life in a 13-mile stretch. But anyways, anybody got any questions or comments? If not, we have a, I'm sorry. Do you have, okay. We got a resolution, Board of Commissioners approving the bid award for the relocation of Mount Pleasant Road and part of Phase 2 of the Runway 24 Extension Project at the Henry County Airport. Somebody move in that direction.
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number 13A, Article 7, 3-17-69 Adoption Ordinance Pertaining to the Film, Television and Video Permit Guidelines. County Manager Bonner.
Commissioners, this is the amendments and the text that was considered by the board a couple of years back and has been adjusted since for the usage of county facilities and county's property by the film industry. The board asked us to tweak and look at a couple of things that were in it at your last meeting, and we have done so. The document essentially spells out what the process would be for the film industry to be able to come and use the facility, what the rates may be, what the considerations have to be. And so that our process that who's the central point of contact and how we will process those things. As you know, we've been inundated with those requests and we needed a policy in place that would address those requests as we receive them internally. We think it's a pretty good document. Obviously, putting it in place leaves me in a better stead to be able to count for them. But what we are looking for is probably going to have to tweak this thing as time goes on, as we learn from the events that come to us. That requesting the board approve the film industry's proposals before you this morning.
Anybody have a question?
Yes.
Can you talk about that?
Yes, sir. The, what, the first thing we identified was we didn't have a central point in Henry County for all the applications. They would go to DOT or they'd go to the parts of the county. And therefore, that entity was the one that was looking at it and that not had the full consideration in it. We didn't have any formal structures to have the contractual parts taking care of relative to liability and the specific use. We left a lot of people out of the review process. So what we've done now, we laid the foundation for the Communications Department to be able to accept all of the applications and then they would divert the review process through the departments to see what was necessary to ensure the county's interests are there. It's the contracts, it would be the assurances from indemnifications and things like that. It is some of the requirements that may require public safety from fire, EMS, inspections and those kinds of things. So now we've got a central location. We should make it quicker. It does provide for some time for us to get it done because the other part is we were getting things in on the afternoon and they wanted to shoot that night as a figurative part. But I think we've got a pretty comprehensive program here. But Commissioner Holmes, is it perfect? I have no idea. We're still going to be having to tweak this, as I said earlier, to make this thing work based off the experience we learned. We think it's going to be better. And the only two people I've asked from the film industry, they didn't seem to object. It seemed to go pretty smooth for them.
Okay. What would constitute a denial if someone wanted to shoot a video or a film in Henry County?
Well, I know you would ask earlier about the content part of it, but there were other pieces, and I'll address the content, then we'll talk about the other. It has some subjectivity to it. There's no question about it. We can't question some of the First Amendment rights for inclusion of it. So what we would ask is where they're going to be at, what are the facilities? They cannot use the Henry County logo or addresses and things like that without specific and express permission. If there was some content that seemed objectable to it, you know, we're going to have to look at that at case-by-case basis and it is the county manager who will take a look at those. Not looking for any other kind of content prohibitions, but certainly going to remain in content with the First Amendment rights for free speech. The other parts of it that you talked about were if they were doing ballistics or if they were doing certain types of pyrotechnics, shootouts, aerial displays, each one of the departments would have a responsibility relative to those to ensure that the health, safety and welfare of the county is taken care of.
Regarding content, can you give me a couple of examples of something that would be deemed denial?
No, sir, we hadn't had any come before us that I've looked at. The ones that had been here in the past were handled by other people. So I'm going to look at each one of them on a case-by-case basis. And if there is a process where I have concerns with it, the board gets to have the final say so. If there was something in it that comes up relative to the use, whether it be a public safety issue, whether it be a content issue, any denials is repeatable to the Board of County Commissioners.
So if there was, say if Al Pacino came here and he wanted to do a Godfather at the courthouse versus the video that was filmed not too long ago, that would come to the board and we would decide if we're going to let Al Pacino film Godfather in the courthouse versus the video? Is that what you're saying?
No, sir. The provision in the resolution that's before you says that if I have concerns about the content, to the degree that it raises that I object to it, their next step would be able to get to the Board of County Commissioners.
So you would make that decision alone?
It is my decision to sign off on yes. It is, the resolution just provides for a single point, not a, it's not done by committee. And it more expedites the getting the process to the board if there's an objection. I've been carefully counseled that there needs to be every consideration given to the First Amendment rights, and I will do so.
So, I mean, are we saying that you're going to be in charge of picking the winners and the losers of the people who want to film in this county?
No, sir, that's not what the resolution proposes at all, Commissioner. What it does propose is that we will evaluate each one of the proposals. We will look at them, respect them from the department use, and if there is a specific question and you want to talk about content, if there's something on there that strikes me as shocking to the conscience, then I will deny it and refer it to the Board of County Commissioners. Can you give me an example of what you would consider shocking or what you would like to see in it relative to that? Does the board want to get the first level of review? And I'm open to it. Right now, we just had to have a process in place and this facilitates getting the thing done. I have no problem letting the board decide each and every one, but we won't be able to process it in seven days.
I just think, you know, we haven't had any issues up until this point.
Yes, sir.
And people have been filming in Henry County for years and we've had our share of pretty good, pretty good movies and shows and things as such. So my concern is that, and I expressed this the last minute, my concern is this is a document that will allow you and potentially the Board of Commissioners to discriminate against someone who wants to film in Henry County. And conversely, we may lose a lot of revenue in that respect. So this document makes me, makes me really nervous to that point.
Understood. Anytime that we have regulatory processes in place, they are going to be people who, you know, will want to push it or not be bound by those. So we have to have the provisions whereby their consideration can take into the next level in terms of administrative fees. But if the, if you've got a suggestion of who you want to sign off on it to make sure that we can facilitate these in a timely and orderly manner, the board will tell me what you want to do.
Yeah, I have no further questions.
Thank you, sir.
Something that I probably want to support.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Anybody need to make any amendments to it, to the resolution? If not, we have the resolution, an ordinance regarding film, television and video permit guidelines. Does somebody would move in that direction to approve or disapprove? It says you've got 30 seconds to. I will repeat, anybody want to move in that direction? Here are none, I think the motion died for lack of a motion.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I don't know where we're going from here. Anybody have a suggestion where we're going with the film industry? Because we're, they are inundating us with. So we'll just continue getting with counsel.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, the ordinance presented to you does not provide a mechanism for denial of an application based on the film's content. It doesn't have that provision. The basis of denial would be one of the objective criteria about noise and traffic and things like that. There is no provision in the, in the ordinance that says we can deny somebody based on content. It is always, like anything, subject to the person that reviews it and whether they reject it on an improper basis. But there's, there's nothing in the ordinance that says that a permit can be denied based on the content of the film.
I think what I'm saying is we're going to continue approving and we're going to be very reluctant to disapprove something because of the First Amendment, as we stated. So we'll just continue doing our own discretion based on what limited criteria we have. But. Having said that, next we have a resolution to amend the 2016-2017 budget. County Manager.
Good morning again, Board. After several iterations and seeking the input of the Board of County Commissioners, we have cut and pasted and think we've captured, as of yesterday, everything that the Board of County Commissioners wanted in the resolution that amends the resolution that dealt with the 4% distribution of the salary increases for the Henry County employees. I've asked you all to check through it over the weekend. You gave us some feedback. We put a couple of different proposals together. This is the text that was sent to you yesterday. We've got another of the feedback and we have tried to confirm with you as best as we can that this is the will of the Board of County Commissioners. I need the board to take a look at the resolution and we're asking for approval so we can start putting the data in for our budget process.
Any comments or questions? I yield the floor District 4.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to clarify to the public what we're doing here. There was some language that needed to be changed to kind of perfect, and I wouldn't say perfect the record, but to make sure that the employees that were intended to get the raise, got the raise. This does not affect bottom line at all. We're not, we're not changing the budget line numbers or anything. This is just verbiage that we're changing to make sure the monies get applied to where they were supposed to be applied in the first place. So just wanted everybody to know we're not changing the budget, the number, the bottom line, just some verbiage in there, so. And I yield the floor, Chairman.
Any other questions or comments? The only comments I would have was, this is my thoughts. I think the full-time and permanent part-time employees, the NSP employees, the GB, correction, CDBG employees, the bailiffs, the elected officials except the county commissioners, which the county commissioners can't raise themselves, all the other elected officials, the appointed officers, supplemental, grant, poll workers, seasonal, temporary and school crossing guards positions, and all the employees that received a raise January the 1st of 16 until July the 1st. The, any employee that was approved an upgrade in the new budget that goes into effect July the 1st and all the employees that is employed less than a year on July the 1st will not get their 4% until they reach an anniversary. Now, having said that, the ones I just mentioned, I would vote for this resolution and give all these people the 4%. And I understand that will add another $200,000 to the budget. So having said that, that's, I'm prepared to vote that way. So I open the floor for anybody else have any comment. Having none, we have a resolution, amending Resolution 16-129, Fiscal Year 2016-2017 Budget to Modify the 4% Increase Given to the Employees. Somebody move in that direction.
So move.
Do you have a motion from District 5?
Second.
Second District 4, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. So move. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Resolution approving license agreement for use of real property between Henry County and Medline Industries Incorporated, Council.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Back in April of this year, the board formally abandoned a portion of Medline Place, which used to be, I think, called Bethlehem Bottoms Road or Drive. And you abandoned it at the request of Medline Industries, who's building a big warehouse, distribution facility on the end of Medline Place. The portion of the road that you abandoned serves no one other than Medline Industries. It's essentially a dead-end street, dead ends into Medline Industries' property. As they were preparing their site plan, As they were preparing their site plan, they determined that because of the slopes of the property, they didn't have sufficient room on their property for their guardhouse, which is a facility that almost every warehouse has where they monitor who comes in and out. And they've requested that they be authorized to utilize the abandoned portion of the right-of-way to put their guardhouse in. And they have proposed a license agreement. They additionally, initially requested we deed it to them, and then they requested we lease it to them, and I recommended that instead, we simply grant them a license to use it, which is similar to a lease, but it gives the licensee fewer rights than a lease. They essentially will have, if approved, the right to travel over the portion of Medline Road that you previously abandoned. They will also have the right to put their guardhouse in that right-of-way. The reason we've done it this way is that some of the proposals for the new interstate exchange may take us down Medline Place, so we don't want to, we don't want to deed away any of that right-of-way. So under this proposal, we will continue to own the property. They will have simply a right to use it. They're required to maintain it. They're required to keep it in good shape. And at the conclusion of the license, which is, ends when we say it ends, we give them six months' notice to end that license agreement. They will return it to us in the present condition it's in. It's important, I think, for the board to know that this road was not built using any county funds, and the counties yet to spend any money on maintenance of that road. So right now, this is a road that was built by a private developer. It hasn't had any maintenance put into it. So the portion that, that was abandoned, we'll never have any money put into it until the county takes it back or dedicates it to public use again. So that's the proposal before you. It will authorize Medline Industries, Inc. to utilize the abandoned portion of Medline Place, and it will become effective only when they build a cul-de-sac at the end of the public portion of Medline. So every one of our dead-end roads has a cul-de-sac, and they're gonna be required to acquire enough right-of-way and build us a new cul-de-sac, and it will be effective upon completion of the cul-de-sac.
Anybody have any questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution approving the license agreement for the private use of Medline Drive and authorizing the chairman to execute the same. Somebody move in that direction.
Move.
Have a motion District Five?
Second.
Second, District Three. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So move. Approval of the minutes made of 3/2016, made of 17/2016. Does somebody move? We approve the minutes as published. Have a motion District Three? Second, District One? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. So move. Chairman has no comments? I started with District Four last time. I'm gonna start with District One this time. Do you have any comments?
No, sir.
I'm gonna move over to District Two.
Yeah, I, I need you guys to bear with me. This has been one of the harder meetings for me because I knew what I was going to say at the end. And I don't know, it's just, it's one of those bittersweet things that I'm about to share with you guys, is that, you know, Henry County's been a part of my life, pretty much all of my life. My family moved here when I was five years old, and I started school right down the street at McDonough Primary, and then I graduated from Henry County High School, you know, a few short years later. And I was always proud of my education from Henry County High because when I got to University of Georgia, I found out that my public education here was just as good as it was for many of the private schools, any of the North Atlanta schools or anything else. And it, it was just a really sense of hometown pride that, you know, I was able to compete once I reached, you know, a higher level with the University of Georgia. And then after graduation, you know, I lived in Atlanta for a few years, worked in public accounting, met my wife at Georgia, actually, but we lived in Atlanta for a few years, but right before, well, I should say, don't want to give the wrong impression, but my wife lived in Atlanta, I lived in Atlanta, we're more of a traditional family. But then as soon as we got married, we moved right back here. Matter of fact, it was funny, we closed on our house, I think, two weeks after we got married in, back in 1998. And then in 2002, I lost my, I mean, in 2000, I lost my father. And then 2002, because of some of those life events with losing my father, I started my first venture with Preston Financial, then Preston and Cleveland Advisor Skills. I've had a number of businesses. I've been blessed with great employees, great people that have brought to Henry County. I've got clients now in 32 states, and it feels incredible when you hire employees and you watch them buy houses, have children. Just, it's something really nice about being an entrepreneur, and, and all that started right here in Henry County. And then in 2004, I can never forget, I was doing some things in 2003 and 2004 with the local Board of Education where I was trying to teach personal finance to high school students through Dr. Parrish, who was incredibly receptive to the idea of doing something that was unusual. And then one of the lunches we had after I had done some, some coursework with, with the students, Dr. Parrish let me know that Mary Ann Mitchum was retiring from the school board, and there was an opening in District Two. And I was flattered because it was one of those things that, I mean, that's one of the reasons I started my business here. So I made my first candidacy for public office in 2004 for the District Two Board of Education. Got elected. I think I was up against five or six other candidates, so it was kind of incredible to have that experience. And then I served close to eight years on the Board of Education until I had a conversation with District Two Representative Fred Alletta at that point, and he, he let me know that, you know, he was going to be making a change and wanted to know if I had any interest in the District Two position. And I told him I'd been praying about the direction of the county. I was the chairman of the Board of Education. I was concerned about some of the things with, you know, how the things are run with the commissioners. So I accepted that opportunity in 2012. But then, I'll tell you, my, my life changed significantly about three years ago. I have two daughters, you know, that are the light of my, my and my wife's, you know, eyes. And I found out about three years ago that my youngest daughter is actually, she's special needs. And it's, it's one of those hard things when you find out that your children are not the same as, as everybody else's children. So instead of taking it, laying down, I've kind of been very proactive on attacking it. The school system here has been incredible with some of the preemptive things that they did for my daughter. But then, when it came time for her to go to kindergarten, you know, we'd been sending her to the Marcus Center for a while up in Atlanta, and they let us know that her education needed to be different than other children's. We needed a lot of special things. So I started doing a lot of research and found that there was an incredible school up in Nashville, Tennessee. And I fortunately had some business interests and locations already up in, and some employees up in Nashville. So I started making some hard decisions for my family because this is the stuff you do as, as a father and as a parent. But it's been, I'll tell you the last year, because this is, a lot of this has only become to fruition with the, putting my daughter in that special school in the last year has been hard because I've kind of been a nomad. I've been traveling. I've been very transparent. Everybody up here on the board, everybody in leadership knows what my struggles, because I have not tried to keep it a secret. I've even shared it with the press in the past that I, for the last few months, I have been living a nomadic life. I still have my house here in Henry County. I'm also still a Georgia taxpayer. Believe me, Georgia likes me being a taxpayer. I still have my homestead exemption. So everything was legal, but it was still an obligation I felt I owed to the citizens of Henry County. I felt like I owed it to the county in general, as well as the employees. I've tried to be an advocate for the employees. And then truthfully, I felt like I owed serving a large portion of my term to the, the candidates that were going to try to vie for my position. I didn't want to leave, you know, right as, you know, my daughter started school because then it would be in the exact same situation that we've had, had happen in District Two so many other times where we've elected officials and then they disappear on us before giving us four years of service. And that's not, that's not a shot at anybody, it's just kind of the precedent that's been laid before us. But I've kind of reached the point, now that we just made it through the election, we've got the budget process that we're winding down on with the millage hearings that you heard the chairman already mention, that I felt like it's time for me to turn the page and kind of close the chapter of my public life. I've been doing public service for 12 years. I've had three terms that you guys have put me in office, and, I mean, I've, I've been so appreciative, and I can't tell you thank you enough. But, and, I mean, we've had some good things that have happened, some fulfilled promises. You know, I like that we, District Two's got two fire stations that have already started breaking ground on. We've got the Hampton and Senior and Rec Center that's been an over-decade-long promise that's in the process of being fulfilled. We changed the way, through the help of you guys, you guys have been a part of this. It's not, you know, the thing is, the commissioner, you're not one person, you're part of a team when you do this stuff. But we were able to prioritize public safety by county, meaning instead of everybody having their own district that you put a fire station in or a police precinct based upon county, I mean, by your district, we, we focused on it by the county. That's a new thing. And then I'm proud to say this will be, at the end of this budget, is, in millage hearings, this will be my fifth cycle. And I voted against the first budget in the first millage hearings because I didn't like the tax increases. But then I voted for the next four because we've been able to give the citizens back through some slight millage decreases. And then also, I feel like I've honored these candidates because I know how hard it is to put your name on a, on a ballot, because, I mean, it is high school on steroids. If you have any insecurities, they will come out in the campaign. So anybody who ever puts their name on a ballot, we all should have the utmost respect for them because it lays you pretty open to anybody and everything. And I feel like I've honored that obligation, too. So my intent is, because I know we have these millage hearings, is that I'm coming to a close of my, my public service, and I, I want the next two months to be a transition period where I would be resigning effectively at the end of July. So that would get us through the millage hearings. But I want to give everybody enough notice so that I wouldn't just be abandoning the county, because I want everybody to be able to, to kind of think this through, figure it out. And then also, I felt like I have a unique set of skills with my public accounting background to go ahead and finish the drill on the budget and millage hearings. So I just thank you guys for your service and always working with me. I know that we've, you know, had disagreements from time, but that's just the, the way that public dialogue goes when you're, when you're doing governance. And it's, it's just been a, a good journey, but I just thank Henry County for all you've given me. I mean, I wouldn't have my business, I wouldn't have everything I have, I feel like, without this county. And I just thank you for, for what you guys have provided, and I hope you all will work with me through this two-month transition period. Thank you so much.
Thank you. District Three?
Well, that's a hard act to follow. But there'll be more to talk about, Brian, but we're gonna miss you. You know, I've been knowing you a long time. I knew you when you played Little League. I knew your mom and dad, and your dad was a fine man, and he raised you right, and your mama did, too. And I appreciate you. I've learned a lot from you, and we're gonna miss you, but always remember, family comes first. And on another note, it's something I, I wanted to share with the board that I think that I would like to see us start reorganization a little bit. I talked to Mr. Bonner briefly about it, but I would like to see if we could structure our meetings more to the night meetings, to, we're getting a lot of zonings now. I think we've got five cases coming the next time. And I would like to see us go to maybe trying to lean all of our in-house stuff on the morning meeting and kind of reserve that night meeting because people come out to the meeting and give them opportunity. But I would like to see if we could structure all our in-house business in the morning meeting and maybe structure it like a, a workshop or something, and save that night meeting for planning and zoning, public comments, and resolutions, and those kind of things. But I just want to share that. Thank you.
District Five?
Christian.
District Four. I bypassed District Four. It's your time to leave.
Okay, I've, I've got to go.
I'm gonna excuse you.
I wanted to thank Commissioner Preston for his service, and I, I appreciate you hanging in till after the election. I, I feel you let the people choose who they wanted to sit in that seat, and it's, it's been an honor to serve with you. I know you're not gone this time, but we'll have time to talk. But I, I just want to thank you for that because, you know, there has been quite a bit of turnover in District Two, and I do feel that the constituents may have been slighted a little bit by having somebody appointed. So you did right by the people by letting them choose who's gonna take your spot. And, you know, it's a hard job, we know it, but we appreciate you, and you will be missed. So thanks so much. And with that, I've got to go.
Okay, we're gonna excuse District Four. District Five?
Yeah, I, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I want to say thank you to Commissioner Preston. It's been a pleasure working with you. I wish you would reconsider and stay until the end of the year. However, I understand family does come first, but I consider you a good friend. A friend as such, I introduce you to a, to someone up in Nashville that I think will help you with your transition. However, it's gonna be sad to see you go, and, and I hope that we'll remain friends throughout the rest of our lives. Thank you.
County Manager, do you have any comments?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, I have two comments. First, the abatement, a question that has come up. We have taken care of what I think is the insect problems with the tablet applications, and now there's a process that's required through a, legal channels and code enforcement channels, and Mr. Weems and Mr. Jogstetter will start that. I will come back, and I think I've sent you an email, when I know the cost and what actually we're gonna be doing there, what would be the best abatement solution on it, then we'll have a process. I'll tell you what the costs are, and we're going on with the project. The first question that came up, Chairman, in your email, was the concern about Zika and those things. We have got that in hand, so it buys us some time to learn what the subdivision is actually looking for and what's necessary for the abatement of the pool in the common area. We'll have a couple of solutions for you pretty quickly. My next one is, you're aware that in our family medical leave act, FMLA contract, or the agreement we've been operating under, has turned out to have some problems in it. The contract was never vetted by the procurement officers here at Henry County. The execution was not approved, or not by the Board of County Commissioners, and I've been asked to extend an agreement whereby, I don't have an agreement in place, so I don't think I can extend something that doesn't agree and I, doesn't have authority from the board. We've talked to the county attorney about it and purchasing. We're gonna have to see if there's a, a means that we can go back to the original quotes and bring a process forward which is consistent with the county's purchasing policy and get it back before the board for our next meeting. I'll have a solution for you one way or the other for our next meeting. And that's all I have, Commissioners.
Just to add to that, I think we find in, from time to time, habitually, that there had been several significant documents signed that the board never approved it, and it wasn't signed by the chair. So you need to be real clear that these documents were signed by somebody other than the chair, and it was not signed by the county manager. So it, they just, the correct protocol was not taken care of. But we in the process of fixing all that, I think. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I'd like to answer County Manager's question. Lyndon, where do we stand on the health clinic?
Right now, we've still got a couple of proposals we could go out and take a look at, and I had intended to show you all something else. The biggest driving question that came up repeatedly from other jurisdictions, and I believe from here, was the pharmaceutical requests for, that the clinic would have provided. With our current health application, we've got two things that I think may actually serve us better than an onsite clinic would have. You now, as of June 1, can go on your phone as a participant in the Blue Cross Blue Shield and dial in a number, and a doctor comes on the phone. Not a P.A., not a nurse practitioner, a physician comes on the phone, and it's activated 24/7. Now, no, they can't see you, but they can talk to you via your phone, a Skype-type connection, listen to your symptoms, or that of your children, your dependents, who was on the insurance, and then write a prescription right there to the insurance and to the pharmacy closest to you. We think we've got a unique and a very progressive circumstance in place that addresses the needs that people could go 24/7 without having a physical plant. The pharmacies are gonna be closer to your house, your physician is gonna be that close, it's gonna be 24/7, not eight hours a day or so many days per week. So if this works, is intended, and it certainly appears that it does by some of the information we've got from people who are utilizing it, the physical plant as a benefit, we may supplant that for a app which is more serviceable, user-friendly, and more available across all times, meaning days, hours, and family members.
Is this a, excuse me, is this a free service, just like the clinic would be?
The clinic wasn't a free service. The clinic was, current year budget's about $500,000 additional. This is included in the insurance premium we're currently paying. When I call this phone number to see the doctor, I'm gonna pay $15. And there may be some mechanisms we could use for copays of that. But the prescription rates would apply. But the prescription rates would apply the same as it would be at a clinic if they told you at the clinic to go to this place to get your pharmaceutical needs, it'd be the same as it is on here.
Well, let me ask you another question. As I remember, the clinic was gonna be a free service for our employees to be able to go to, and they're gonna be able to get their prescription drugs at no cost, the generic brand. So what you're telling me is totally different from what we had talked about in the past?
Well, I think the misconception is they're free. It was gonna cost the Board of County Commissioners, you put $700 and some thousand dollars in it in the initial year. In your current year, you've got $500,000 in that to open that physical plant up and staff under the contract arrangement that was previously with another vendor. What I think we've got, and we get a while to test it to make sure, once staff gets used to it, and our people on our dependency, I think we're gonna have a far more robust employee benefit. The clinic is a benefit. It never was about reducing costs. I don't think we have seen a single document that says clinic or healthcare costs were reduced by providing a clinic. So when I looked at this, and I was scratching my head, what is the best thing that I can say 24/7, doesn't matter how many, what day of the year it is, I can get a physician on the phone who can talk to you about your symptoms or your family's symptoms, prescribe you a medicine, and/or facilitate your being put in a hospital. I think that that is a much more user-friendly benefit than the additional $500,000 we had planned on using with the physical plant where the clinic is.
Originally, it was 750 in the budget.
That's correct. That was your initial year.
We went down to 500. So what changed? How did it go from 750 to 500?
Commissioner Barnum, your first year contemplated a lot of other things, like construction, furniture, getting the physical plant where the clinic was located. It had a cost to it, and right now, with all that in place, we think we can remove that cost, and the functional part of providing a clinic service there, we budgeted it at $500,000, and that's what the board approved in the four workshops and in your budget twice. It was one of the main capital lines that I've left open at $500,000. So you could use that money in any other places there. You could use it to supplement the, these costs, because it's set up for the clinic. And the clinic, no doubt, was intended to be a benefit for the employees. I believe this is actually gonna be a more benefit to the employees because of its timeliness, its cost, and the service that it actually provides with a physician on immediate call, right by the bedstand. I don't have to wait till morning. I don't have to go during school hours, you know, so I think we've got a better circumstance for us.
And I see some benefits from that, but I see that it's part of our insurance program, and I, we've promised our employees we're gonna try to do this clinic, and I'd just like to see us on up to our end of the deal. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments with the County Manager at this time?
Date us on the maintenance plan for right-aways and the medians, because I haven't seen much improvement this spring, actually, summer now.
The District Five corridors is county-wide.
I'm not just talking about District Five. You know, wherever I go throughout the county, man, the grass is out of control, and we talk about this all the time, but I never see any improvement.
Well, we're still on the rotation, and I think we're still in the three-week rotation, but we're also in the growing phase. But Commissioner, to ask you what we've changed, if you recall, the Board of County Commissioners let me split two positions, and we're interviewing this week four part-time positions to dedicate strictly for corridor mowing. And that's the plan where we said, you asked for a plan, and I think I wrote that to you.
And I'm okay with that, but what about the rest? I mean, just because we're doing the commercial corridors, doesn't mean you forget about the rest of the county.
No, sir. No, I don't mean to do that. That was just a question that was between you and I. The four people will be the mowing crew. We'll use them wherever we can, and we're certainly want to try to do a better job. Where, one of the places I hike on this, on a right-of-way, I'm in grass this tall, litter. So we understand that.
And garbage as well. So, I mean, it's worse than I've seen it since I've been on the board, since, what, 2010. So if there's any way you can ratchet that up, that would be great.
Well, we get the four on, and we think we'll be there. Commissioner, you know what? You bring up a trend that has popped up. I talked to my counterpart in Spalding County, I've asked a question there. They're experiencing the same thing. There is a lot more litter than we used to have. And it don't, I know that's a societal thing, but it's our job to clean it up.
That's Spalding County, that's not Henry County.
Well, you've acknowledged it appears to be increased here.
Our level should be a lot higher than Spalding and Butts and some of the other counties around.
I agree, but when you brought up the point, it seems to be more here than it's been a while. Mr. Weems has been out picking up more trash than he ever has also.
I'm saying our expectations should be up here, it shouldn't be with everybody else. When you come in Henry County, you should know that you're in Henry County. You're not in Spalding or Butts or anywhere, or Clayton. You're in Henry County, and this is how Henry County presents itself. That's what I want to see, and I'm sure the rest of the people in the board wants to see that as well.
Yes, sir. It wasn't the comparison, it was just sharing with you that there are other people, other jurisdictions have an increased part. So it just had to be a coincidence that other counties and municipalities are seeing the same thing that you've observed, there's more litter for some reason. Thank you.
And what comments?
You want to speak? I yield the floor to District One.
I just want to thank Brian for his service, and I was after the facts, so I didn't, you dropped the bombshell on me. But anyway, I appreciate it, and we'll talk later. But anyway, another thing I'd like to bring up, and I slipped my mind, was today is Henry County's 25th year anniversary as a police department, and I just want to congratulate them. That's all, thank you.
Okay. Getting back to the cutting grass, I have a remedy for that. If we could get the board to approve reducing the fund balance from 25% of the budget down to 15%, we wouldn't have to continue raising taxes every year, and just this year alone, we could pick up anywhere from $10 to $12 million, and how much grass could we cut for $12 to $15 million? But that's just my thoughts, so if you're looking for a possible financial tool, that would be it. 25% is significant, and our monthly outflow is about $11 million a month. So right now, we're saving about $37 million, where if we reduced it down to two months, which would be somewhere around 15%, we could, the fund balance would be about $22 or $23 million. And to my knowledge, we've never dipped before that, looking for rainy day stuff, but that's just my suggestion. Having said that, anybody want to comment? If not, I'm gonna yield the floor to the county attorney, if you have any comments.
No, sir.
Upcoming meetings and events. June 21st at 6:30 PM is a regular meeting. July 5th at 9:00 AM, regular meeting has been canceled, that would be the week of the 4th of July. Public carrying for millage rate, July 20th at 9:00 AM, and 6:30 PM that same day, an adoption of the millage rate will be on July 27th, as I indicated at the beginning of the meeting to that young lady that was discussing taxes. If the board didn't anticipate increasing your property tax, then they could get by with one meeting. But the law says if you anticipate, not that they're gonna raise your taxes, but if they anticipate an increase in your property tax, then they have to have three meetings. Having said that, executive sessions, I know we got future, we got right-of-way issues. Do we have any other issues that need to be discussed in executive session?
That I know of.
Yes, sir. You don't have any? Right-of-way? Okay, does somebody move to adjourn into executive session to discuss right-of-way acquisitions?
So move. Have motion District Three, Second District One, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign, so move. We will adjourn, and we'll be back shortly.